Submission to develop a structure at Ten Converse Place. But before then, we have our standard opening in minutes or opening meeting and updates. So Brian, did you have anything you wanted to give us an update on?
I think the only update is just for me, at least somewhat of a small selfish update of saying that on Monday I took my certified planners exam and I passed and I'm very excited about that. And the final step is a it's an essay portion that can be taken, you know, at any time. It's not really that high pressure exam situation. And that and so then I would be official and AICP member in July of this coming year. So I think, so yeah, super been studying pretty much all the time for the past two and a half months. And I'm glad that it's over and I would say that's probably the the one important update for me at the moment. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent news. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thanks, appreciate it really. I was it was nerve wracking and I'm glad that it's over.
Okay. Are there any updates from any other or any of the other board members say on any of the working groups or committees that they are liaisons to?
Nothing to report.
Cheryl, you've been through so much with the Capitol Planning Committee. Are you just tired? Okay.
All as well.
All as well? That's excellent. Sally, did you want to say something about the the urban forest thing?
The Urban Forest Committee is moving along. We're still in a stage of trying to, not trying, of working to identify our priorities because one of the priorities is coming up with a tree by law that provides further protection to trees in town. And another priority is more proactive and it has to do with education to the people who live here and the people who work on trees here. And so we're honing in on the strategies and the work plan so that we can get down to brass tacks.
Excellent, thank you. And that's about it. I think we're going to have a little bit of dead air now because I I our hearing doesn't start for another nine minutes.
Dear, may I speak?
Yeah, sure.
So I want to address the
Oh, Sally, I think we have to start that at the beginning of the
That would be fine with me. That would be fine with me.
Yeah, that that I think we need to have in the public hearing.
Perhaps Brian could give an update on on either North Main Street or Holton or Washington Swanton or Waterfield? Because I don't really know the update on those. Is that putting you on the spot, Brian?
No, that's totally fine. So Waterfield, I believe, so the Select Board has instructed the manager and the and the assistant town manager to you know, continue negotiations with Civico. As far as Washington and Swanton, I have no updates on that. I don't know anything since the town meeting vote. For those that don't know, town meeting authorized the Select Board to acquire the land for a maximum of $5.3 million in order for the purpose of affordable housing. There was an amendment on the floor that required all of it to be rental so that all of the units would count. So it would be a 25% rental development on that site. Sally, USR, another one as well, which
Oh, Holton?
Holton Street. So, yeah, we definitely are starting or I'm starting to feel this crunch of time related to this project for Holton and feel that the idea of going out for an RFP might we might not be able to get this project done in this fiscal year and I would like to use this money in this fiscal year so that we can continue this nice streak going along of doing projects, studies around town in order to potentially increase compliance with the master plan. So the idea is that we have about forty five thou- nearly forty five thousand dollars to use for this. And I think that we still can can definitely get the not only the most bang for our buck, but also a high quality a high quality product from MAPC. And based upon the research that I did in terms of the real positives here are the fact that there is not going to be a full matching portion from MAPC, but no matter what, there will be some technical assistance that we can that will be encouraged for us to apply for that we will not undoubtedly receive, but it's it's pretty well, they're basically, this is how these projects work is if the town is really willing to commit more than sixty five, seventy percent of the cost of a project. That's what their funding, that's what their technical assistance money is for. So just in interest of time, so right now it's it's November. So we're looking towards June thirtieth, I think in order to have a robust public process and for us to actually have a project that spans the course of five to six months, in order to actually spend that forty five thousand dollars. I I I think MAPC would be, it would, they would be the best group to to work with.
A slight direction, Brian, isn't that fifteen thousand? The money we got from from town meeting was fifteen thousand.
Yes, but we have, yes, but we have thirty thousand dollars of professional services money that we have not you, we have not touched for one second. Meaning, sorry, one dollar, you know, we have, so there is forty, essentially forty five thousand dollars in professional services right now.
Brian, am I right that there's also twelve thousand dollars left over from the master plan?
That is correct. So I want to say somewhere between twelve to fourteen. Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry, that got garbled. What?
Sorry, somewhere between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand. Yes, yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
Well, so so we have, we have some resources to work with and the goal is to figure out the best use of the land up there. Right?
Well, I think the goal at this point is after now that we've collected the kind of the scenarios that could potentially happen, we've gotten some recommendations specific, you're you're talking about Holton or you're talking about North Main?
No, I'm talking about Holton.
Yeah, well, it's 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 really, I think, we don't know what the process is. We just know that that area is ready for some, you know, some change for the better, more in line with what the town as a whole is is looking for. Which is basically an expanded, a little, an expanded commercial base potentially in a high tech sector or like a robotic sector, something, something biomedical, something like, something like that where where a lot of Winchester residents are currently commuting to Cambridge and Boston for those types of high tech jobs. The idea was that to potentially bring in more commercial and bring, but that was just an idea and the from the Triangle Master Plan from many years ago that never got worked on and that never got really kind of shopped out to the public very much. So we would want to revisit that.
And one last thing, picking up from what Sally was saying before, any word on when the final version of the North Main Street study will be available?
That's supposed to be ready before the mid, mid-December, so I'm hoping I would, this, there should be something to us within the next, my guess is one to two weeks. But I can get affirmed, I can get a firm date on that out to the board soon. I can have another check in with Josh.
Okay, that, yeah, my mind, my memory said sometime in November, but that's fine.
So, do you have, can I, can I comment on that?
Sure, we've got another four minutes.
I'm really looking forward to seeing the recommendations from the MAPC on how we can address North Main Street because I think there's lots of opportunities up there to make it a better place to live and work. Now, well, live and visit, I don't know how many jobs there are on North Main Street other than the position, the jobs in the commercial establishments, but it's going to be a great place to live and walk and be, and I'm looking forward to having that be the outcome.
Okay, excellent.
Go ahead.
I've got, we've got dead air. It's the thing you always hate in your broadcasting is dead air. But we are, we are bound by our schedule. We did, well, one of the things that we could talk about very briefly or just make a note of it is that we are going to be forming a working group to look at ADUs and their, and how we can deal with them in the zoning. And so I guess the key thing here is just to let everyone know that I will start, if the board's okay with it, I'll start reaching out to some committees to see which ones are interested. And the ones I'm thinking of, of course, are Housing Partnership, Disability Access, Council on Aging. Let's see, anyone that I have forgotten, we're, we're trying to, probably going to have a working group of hopefully eight to nine people. So this might turn out to be something like the Urban Forest Working Group where it's a joint meeting of of the planning board with one or two of these other boards. So I, if someone in the planning board is interested in serving on that working group, let me know.
This is the ADU, you said?
This is for accessory dwelling units for those of you who are not familiar with that acronym. So I think it would be good to have two people from the planning board on there. So if you are interested, just send me some email. And or you can speak up now.
I'd be interested.
Okay, Yicheng is in? Anyone else want to step forward?
Well, I I can step forward to the extent that I've got some research initiated that I'd be happy to hand off to Yicheng if she wants to take the ball and run with it, or I'd be happy to serve with Yicheng on such a working group if there's others that don't want to. If there's no others that want to, that's what I mean to say.
I I think you have claimed your spot, Sally.
So Yicheng, it's the Yicheng Sally Show.
I'm into, I'm, I'm, I'm into it, but I don't have the time, so.
Just to, just to report on that, because we have one minute left is, as I've said in past planning board meetings, I have a stalled project on my desk, which is researching all of the decision points that communities make when they consider it's accessory dwelling unit law. And it's every bit as complicated and variegated as a tree by law. There's, there's way more points that you would ever imagine. And so I'm trying to tabulate those for the help of the process.
Excellent. Well, then you have a head start. Okay, so according to cellphone time, we're now at seven forty five, so we can now open up the public hearing on Ten Converse Place. And at this point, Sally, if you wanted to make your statement, please go ahead and then we will dive into the schedule.
I would like to make my statement and I want to say that I want to respond to the letter that I received today from Art Krieger in response to communications that my husband Dennis Dale sent to the development team in connection with Ten Converse Place. And I want to say with great emphasis that I had absolutely no idea that that letter was going out. Art, I assure you that that is the case. I found out about it this morning. I actually don't even know when it was sent, but I found out it this morning when I had a nine AM scheduled meeting with Brian. And he relayed that information to me. I would not have wanted that letter to go out because I believe that this project needs to go through the process that it is and it doesn't need to be any more it's not a legal word, kerfuffle associated with the project. I'd much rather just stick to the facts of the matter. So, yes, I had no involvement in my husband's email. With regards to impartiality regarding this project, I will state publicly that I am absolutely impartial to there being a positive outcome for this project. I have said all along that I want beautiful mixed-use housing development on this piece of property that is one of our, you know, most sort of critical pieces of land in town. It's going to be a great opportunity to develop. The question I have for Art is, is one impartial if one has opinions? Or is one impartial for other reasons? In other words, does having an opinion on a subject make you impartial? Excuse me, make you not impartial? Because I I have opinions, but I don't, I, I, my goal is to have a positive, positive outcome for the town in terms of mixed-use housing and commercial on that site.
Sally, the answer is that everybody who lives in town for a while and serves on local boards has opinions about lots of things that come before them. The key is simply whether each board member maintains an open mind, listens to the the comments, the reviews, the application, the staff comments, developers' presentation, neighbors, listens to all the evidence with an open mind and does his or her objective best to apply the bylaw or regulatory standards to what he or she has heard. You do not have to be devoid of opinions and that would not be a realistic standard.
So to the standard of being open-minded and listening to all sides and all perspectives and all positions on all sides, I absolutely commit to you to continue my impartiality. I'm very, very committed to a positive outcome for this site, to see housing mixed-use and a place where the town can even more enjoy the center of our village.
So, so Sally, you're, I appreciate your responses here. They, they don't have to be directed to me. I set out the legal standards for dispelling any appearance of impartial, of partiality that may have been generated by your husband's email under chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three B three, which deals not with actual conflicts of interest or bias, but perceived or apparent conflicts or bias. The way to dispel those is to publicly disclose the circumstances that may give rise to that appearance. And then to do as you have done to reaffirm your impartiality, notwithstanding those circumstances. The circumstances here are your husband's email regarding the project. And you have now addressed that. You have disclosed that that's what we're talking about and you have, you have represented to the public, not so much to me, but to your fellow board members and to the public as well as the interested private parties, that you will be impartial and had nothing to do with that, with that email. So it's not, it's not what I think, but but to my mind, you have met the the legal standards that I set out for complying with twenty-three B three and continuing to participate in the, in the matter.
Thank you. I would welcome the opportunity to continue to participate in the matter with impartiality.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that, Sally. I hope that clears the air.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thank you all, and you too, Art.
So Brian, if you could pull up our, our, our super detailed mini agenda for the evening, we can we can get to the meat of the matter if it were from a vegetarian. That sounds strange, but you'll. Okay, Brian, are you with other, you're?
Yeah, you're not seeing this?
Oh, now we're seeing this. Okay, great.
Sorry.
So this evening, we're going to be concentrating on on two issues. One of which is, I think, the, the, the one issue which, from which everything else flows, which is what the, what a PUD is and how in particular the, the specific PUD requirements are being met. The applicant is filing under PUD three and there are particular requirements and filing under that provides relief from one limitation on the FAR. And if that limitation, so that's, that's, I think, the key to this project going forward is to understand whether or not the, it, it meets the requirements for the PUD. So Art, I think we're going to put you on the spot just a little bit. And that in previous discussions around the zoning, we have come upon some what seem to be conflicts within the zoning, in particular, when, for instance, in the PUD, the PUD essentially allows the board to extend the height above what's allowed under special permit. But it still needs to be reconciled with the design goals and 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 of the bylaw, which are that development fit within the village character of the downtown. And if you could hopefully give us some guidance on how we could weigh those two different, those perhaps conflicting requirements and also say something about when we look at the separate design guideline document, which was prepared for the CBD, what sort of legal standard, is that as binding as the zoning bylaws? Or are those just really good ideas?
I'm happy to address those as as much as I can. Actually, Brian, would you maintain the screen share? Do you mind? Just so I know what I'm supposed to be addressing here. The difficulty is addressing these things in the abstract, so let me start basic. The zoning bylaw is, is governing, the governing law that this board operates under. And it, it, of course, has to be consistent with state law. But the zoning for the CBD seven point three is, as far as I know, consistent with state law. So so the zoning bylaw is, has the force of law. If that says shall or must, then unless there's a waiver or variance of some kind, that has to be obeyed. If it says may or should, then it's more discretionary with the board, whether to apply a particular criterion or part of those, part of the bylaw. Under the bylaw and specifically authorized by the bylaw are this board's regulations governing the CBD. And those are entitled regulations governing seven point three, section seven point three, Center Business District of the Town of Winchester, Massachusetts zoning bylaw. Those did not have to go to town meeting. Those are regulations adopted just by the board. But they, they also are, even though they're one level down from the bylaw, they have the force of law according to their terms. So again, if they say must or shall, then, and this is not as ironclad because this, the the language and the context may differ much more. This is a much more expansive document than the regulations and much more qualitative and and nuanced. But in general, if it says must or shall, then that would be that would again be binding. If they say may or should, or, you know, the board may determine if, whatever, you know, any kind of discretionary language is just that it's discretionary. Now, within those, so some things in those regulations are mandatory. And the easiest place to see that is in the submittal requirements at the very beginning. You, the fee is required, the number of copies is required, the scale is required somewhere. I'm not seeing specific provisions. But if it says basically an applicant shall submit X, Y, and Z, then that's what an applicant has to do. Again, unless there's a waiver, there is a section two point six provides for waivers from design standards and from submittal requirements if the applicant requests and the board grants it. But certain things, subject to the, subject to the, to a waiver, are clearly mandatory in these regulations. But the regulations contain within them a set of design guidelines, which by their terms are not intended to be binding regulations and are not written in a way that can be applied as binding. Whether it's, whether it's because some of them are inconsistent in different contexts and the board has to has to use its discretion as to what, what to value more on a particular site or in a particular location. Or whether it's just that they're written more, again, with more nuance and leaving more to discretion. So even though they're part of the regulations, the guidelines themselves are not strictly speaking binding. Now, some of them are expressed fairly forcefully, like, you know, a bill, I, I forget the number, but a building that basically relates only to itself and not the neighborhood will not be accepted. That, that's, that's a pretty strong statement, pretty unequivocal. However, of course, embedded in that is a bunch of discretionary decisions. What does it mean for a building to relate to its surroundings or only to itself? How much can it do so? You know, does maybe some features of a building do one and some the other? So all of the design guidelines, in my view, although they are to be honored as much as possible and implemented as much as possible, are inherently discretionary and and qualitative. That's about as much as I can say in the abstract. I'm happy to look at particular guidelines or provisions that the board is wrestling with. But let me turn back now to the questions. How do we reconcile the height relief in the PUD with the design requirements of a village? Again, I need, I need to see the specific, specific requirements. I take it that the height, height relief is a certain number of feet and the design requirements talk more generally about a village feel or village character. Well, in that case, I would say the height requirement controls. Well, you certainly couldn't go more than the height in the name of maintaining a harmonious village. But that's not really the sense of the question. The sense of the question is, can you go less than the height that the PUD permits in, in order to achieve a village feel or to maintain a village feel? And I'd, I'd have to, I don't want to give a particular opinion without looking at the, at the exact language. But if the height relief is phrased as, as of right, then I would say they get, they get to do that height. If it's phrased as discretionary, then you get to sort of combine that with considerations of a village character and maybe you wind up permitting less, less than that. One point two of the agenda here are the CBD design guidelines on equal footing with the zoning or are they more like suggestions? I think I've answered that. The regulations are on an equal footing with the zoning in the sense that they are both binding on this board, subject again to any waiver or variance. But the guidelines within the regulations are not phrased that they can be applied, easily applied as binding in the same way. So they are to be, as I said, followed and implemented as much as, as you can. But you have an awful lot of different kinds of considerations and factors to weigh in arriving in a design that you think is compatible with, with the sense of the guidelines. So you have, you have a lot of, you have a lot of discretion under the guidelines, even, even though they're, they're within the binding regulations. So I hope that is clear. If not, I'm happy to go over some more.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that, Art. Does any of the board members have any questions for Art at this point? I, I guess you've answered all of our questions, Art. Excellent. Thank you very much. Now, to continue on our, on our agenda, we're next, I think we, we, Brian, you were going to give us a little bit of history of PUDs, their purpose and how we, how they relate to what's going on in town center.
Yeah, can everyone see it says seven point three point fourteen establishment of PUD areas?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to go straight into the zoning in terms of what a PUD is. I hate to be the guy to just read this, but I think I'm going to do that. So the purpose of the PUD is to encourage and facilitate development of new mixed-use developments, especially those that are incorporating a substantial number of housing units within the CBD. The PUD is intended to ensure coordination and flexibility in design and review through a carefully controlled process rather than through an application of fixed regulations. It's expected that any residential component within a PUD will provide a diversity of housing types, price points, and sizes to accommodate a wide range of ages and economic levels. So there are three PUDs that were identified, uh, in the Center Business District. Uh, the Waterfield Lot, uh, the north part of Main Street, and then the Mill Pond Site, which is this, uh, current project site. So out of the entirety of the Center Business District, these are the three areas that were essentially pegged for more intense development, which is why the FAR is allowed to be higher in these specific areas under certain conditions. So in, um, I'm just gonna, this is a little more perfunctory here, um, but I'm gonna go.
Sorry. I think it'd be help, can I say something?
Please.
Um, I think it'd be really helpful to, uh, the public, um, to some to define what FAR is.
Sure. I think that's a great idea. I'm going to get to it, um, right here as in terms of one, uh, one of the dimensional requirements, and I will explain what the FAR is. Um, so one of the big, uh, one of the very, uh, the, one of the big differences of, of a PUD rather than other areas in the Center Business District is that you're allowed to go up, uh, above a two point five FAR. What an FAR is, is a maximum amount of density. So it's basically the square footage of the lot. And what an FAR of two, if you have, if you have a lot that's 10,000 square feet and an FAR of two, that means the max you can do in there is, is 20,000 square feet. The max you can do is two times the square footage of the lot. So this lot is, um, just over 25,000 square feet. So, uh, in this PUD, um, a lot of 25,000 square feet, uh, could potentially have up to nearly 75,000 square feet of, of, um, floor space. So the only way to achieve this extra bonus point five, as you can see here, is if the construction of the development references and clearly meets the goals and objectives of the CBD by offering more diverse housing opportunities, which address the population needs of the Winchester community. So this is specifically related to offering more diverse housing opportunities. Um, you'll see later on, uh, that, uh, in the, in the bylaw and in other places in the bylaw where you could get, uh, outside of a PUD, you could get a height bonus by giving more affordable units. But that is not the case for a PUD. So, um, it's definitely not, um, specifically called out that of more affordable units are required. It specifically says, uh, a diversity of housing opportunity, a more diverse housing opportunities, which address the population needs of the Winchester community. So this is part of the conversation that we're going to be going on. But the main parts of PUDs, like I said at the beginning here, is, is to allow more flexible zoning, uh, to achieve the goals of the center. So I think I'll stop there, uh, in terms of kind of an intro of what plan unit developments are and the goals and the goals of these plan unit developments is to not only offer more diverse housing, but to do it, uh, in a larger scale. It specifically says it as an objective. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Um, and if you could, if you could actually go continue sharing your screen. I think moving into the next part of the agenda, there's also, uh, if you scroll up in the document. I'm sorry, let's go. So we're, the next we're going to be talking about is what, what does it mean to have a diversity of housing and where does it apply? And Brian, if you go to that very first thing that you called out, that you, you read out rather.
Yes, sure. Um, here that you're talking about, it is expected that any residential component?
Yeah, within a PUD will provide a diversity of housing types, so that when we're talking about diversity of housing, we are talking about just within the PUD rather than a diversity of housing across, say, the CBD or across town. Am I correct?
So yeah, here's, you can see PUD three here, which incorporates the Mill Pond Building as well as other portions of the center. Um, and the idea of this, uh, goal or, uh, of, of the PUD to offer, um, different types, specifically condo or rental, was never supposed to be, uh, in the same building. Those types of buildings generally don't get built in terms of mixes of, uh, uh, rental and homeownership. So the idea is that, uh, with one of the goals is obviously to incorporate more, uh, uh, and different condo, or both condo and rentals throughout the center, but it was, it's not anticipated that, that anyone would be able to do to have that, uh, both condo and, uh, rental in the same building. That was never contemplated, nor would it be required.
So to follow up on that, in a sense, um, whatever is built on this site would actually put constraints on anything else that would be built in the remainder of the PUD, because let's say if this is all condo, then we would have to be looking at a preponderance, say, of rentals in the rest of the site in order to get that diversity.
I, I think if they were looking for an extra FAR, yes, the board could, could, could choose to do that. Yes, that's what, yes, great.
Okay, excellent. Um, so if we flip back to the agenda, I just, that was, I thought a key line from that. So, um, I think the, the three questions that I came up with, and the board could certainly chime in at any point, was to just to, to, um, sort of define what housing diversity is. How do we measure it and what geographical area are we looking at? I think the, the zoning bylaw says clearly that we're looking at what's within the PUD itself. And then the other question is, what exactly are the needs of Winchester? And those are obviously not, um, subjective. They are, no, they are subjective, not object. Sorry. In any case, um, we do have, uh, we've had input from the Housing Partnership Board. And the Housing Partnership Board Chair, John Servier, I believe, is online. John, are you, do you want to sum up what the, what the board, how the board views housing diversity?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. I can, just a couple of, uh, comments. I think the, uh, you know, the bottom line is that we would, uh, agree, the Housing Partnership Board agree with the definition that Brian, uh, just provided. Let me just provide some historical context. When the Ten Converse Place develop, uh, development was being discussed in the preliminary discussions before the application was submitted. Uh, attention was drawn to that third sentence. It is expected that any residential component within a PUD will provide a diversity of housing types. There was some, there was a proposal and, and some members of the, uh, we'll call it the previous planning board, thought that that, uh, was defined as only affordable housing. And so, um, the Housing Partnership Board had a series of discussions. We kind of looked into the background of this sentence. The inclusionary housing provisions in the CBD zoning, uh, dealing with, uh, affordable housing were drafted with the assistance of Edith Neder, uh, consultant. She's written inclusionary housing provisions in other, for other towns. She did not write this sentence. Uh, it's not her style in there. And, uh, her style would be to, to have a general opening sentence, but then to spell out exactly what that means in the zoning code and to spell it out in more detail in the CBD rules. The CBD, this sentence is not addressed as part of the inclusionary zoning language. It's not addressed in the rules supporting the CBD inclusionary zoning language. And so, uh, the conclude, the memo I submitted, uh, evolved over a few months or several months. And the, I mean, the key findings were that the Housing Partnership Board interpreted this sentence very generally, uh, in there. And it means really not limited to affordable housing, but includes the full range of housing. So, uh, as included in the, the last set of plans, uh, having a mix of studios, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom, uh, would satisfy, uh, you know, that provision, even though, uh, those units are market rate units. Having a diversity of size, implying a diversity of price also would, uh, would satisfy that. The Housing Partnership Board actually went one step further. And Brian, uh, used and emphasized the word flexibility, uh, particularly on this site. We felt that in determining a PUD and examining the PUD, you should examine the, the kind of totality of the design. You know, including the open space, including the landscaping, uh, including the amenities, including the fact that, that there would be a, a commercial component on the first floor. And all these things, uh, kind of work together to, uh, in and out. One can argue that, that, uh, we went too far in, uh, including that. But we felt that the, the project had to be looked at in totality. So I think that's a quick summary of the memo that, uh, we submitted last January, uh, and that was distributed in the pack.
Thank you. Uh, board members, do you have any questions of?
I do. I wonder if Brian can put, um, put up that, that clause, the seven point three point nineteen point three inclusionary housing incentives. My question, um, along with that, uh, what, what had included something like part of that. Um, and I can start to read it. It says inclusionary housing incentives to further promote affordable housing in the CBD. An applicant may, with a special permit from the SPGA, reduce the number of required parking spaces by up to point two five spaces per unit and or increase FAR by up to point five if more than the required affordable units are constructed, uh, uh, are constructed. Seven point three point one nine point three.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that allows someone, uh, or that allows a developer who's not in a PUD to get that extra FAR.
Oh, so this doesn't apply to the PUD.
It could. If, if they wanted to, they could, they could, they could do that and for instance, not supply that much housing diversity and just go through a normal special permit process rather than the PUD. Um, and they could instead, you know, apply for height and apply for additional FAR. It, it's just a different process. But the PUD clearly is supposed to offer the most amount of flexibility. But, but you do point out, uh, uh, something that's correct, that they could, they could have done this. And then we all, um, and then the board, um, it would have been very clear that they would have to do this, but historically, this is mainly, uh, mainly aimed at, at, at everybody, but it's, it's more aimed at, uh, people that are, uh, uh, parcels that are not in the PUD, in any PUDs.
Okay. And I think John addressed it in his letter. And if we could, um, John, if you could, uh, Mr. Sobe, uh, sort of verbally, um, let us know what your response to that was.
Okay, yeah, I'm not.
So, this is your memo. Sorry, John, this is your memo.
In front of me that, that you just quoted.
It's right, um, it's now a screen share.
Sorry, it's, uh, seven point three point nineteen point three. Right there. So it's saying that, um, you can either reduce the number of required parking spaces by up to point two five or increase FAR, but, uh, by more than point five if more than the required affordable units are constructed. However, here it still says, so this is, these are, these are not for PUDs, because it says, under no circumstances can the FAR be more than the maximum allowed in a particular subzone. So it's basically specific to, to special permit. So it allows someone to go to, um, to maybe get that extra point five if, uh, cause only by right is, by is one point five. So the max would be two point five, uh, in a special permit. This would allow them to get up to two point five with greater, uh, reliability because they can, because a developer can say, hey, I'm supplying more affordable units. I, I quote deserve this point five. But again, these are for special permits, not for, uh, projects within the plan unit development.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree with Brian's definition. This, this paragraph, uh, is written not with the PUD necessarily in mind, but with the broader CBD zoning in mind. And, uh, one of the, the questions that comes up is, uh, you know, are you allowing? Are you allowing incentives? And one of the things that, uh, Edith Neder wanted to include in here were a set of incentives that would, uh, that would encourage more affordable housing. And that's what this paragraph is doing. So that, that the two incentives are both, you know, one is parking and the other one is FAR.
I'm just thinking that by special permit, right, this, this lot in the PUD, uh, could get up to two point five. But the applicant is asking for three point O. So I, I was, I was just wondering how this, these two things connect. If, if this, this particular clause, um, connects to what we're supposed to consider. But I think I understand what you're saying, that it's it's not.
Right. It, it's that last sentence of it that says, under no circumstance can the FAR be more than the maximum allowed in a particular subzone. So the maximum that's allowed in any particular subzone is two point five. So it basically, again, it would, it would basically allow a developer to more easily get a special permit, um, for this incentive. Whereas in a PUD, there are other, other things that are specifically called out. Meaning tho- those other things are housing, specifically housing diversity.
Okay. So it's housing diversity that, that, that phrase that we're considering.
That is correct. That is the crux of this conversation, um, that allows an addition of it up to three point O for an FAR, which is at the, at the heart of, uh, the scale and, 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 um, what we've been hearing, uh, from, from several, you know, uh, different sites.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly, you know, providing more affordable housing units than is required is one step to providing housing diversity. But the Housing Partnership Board is saying, and what Brian is saying, it's, it's not the only option and, and is not a required option.
And from your letter.
Action.
From your letter, Mr. Sobe, uh, you, I think you said also that you would, um, something about, um, not making it impossible for somebody to develop.
Yeah, one of, I mean, one of the points, uh, we made in the letter is that, uh, and that, and the Housing Partnership Board is very sensitive to this is that, you know, any development to go, that goes forward has to be financially feasible. And, uh, and so if, you know, if you're trying to, uh, prevent a housing development, uh, you put in all kinds of requirements. So this no longer financially feasible for the developer. You know, that's not something that, uh, the Housing Partnership Board would support. And, and I, I don't think the planning board would support that either. So I think in terms of coming up with, you know, what does it mean to have more diverse housing options? There are, there's a limit, there's a constraint on that, that, uh, you don't want to drive up the cost so much that it's no longer feasible to develop.
It's very helpful. Thank you so much for all of your work, your board's work, your committee's work.
Uh, any other, any more questions of John Servier or Sally?
Um, so John, thank you for that. And I want to say that what I understand to be the critical phrase is something to the effect that the diversity of housing would address the needs of the community. And as I thought about the words, um, address, well, first of all, the word address. address, well, first of all, the word address means go in the direction of not solve. And so I appreciate that this proposal is going in the direction of meeting the needs of affordable housing in our town. And what I was curious about, I was, this is all just sitting at my desk thinking, how do we know what the needs, the housing needs of the community are? And I thought perhaps that the housing production plan, any reports by the Council on Aging and any language in the master plan would absolutely, or, or not absolutely, would in, would together come up with some answer about what the needs of the community are. But nonetheless, when you take the FAR and the financial feasibility and the requirement for 10% affordable housing at this level of affordability and 5% of this, this building absolutely meets those needs. And so because, because they're doing anything at all to meet affordable housing. But it will be interesting for me, and I haven't had time to do it, to really study what, how have we articulated the needs of the community in those three documents that I just mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, at a high level, I would just comment on two needs. I mean, I think the number one need and what the number one, you know, major goal of the CBD zoning was to promote and obtain more housing within the central business district. And so one of the needs is simply to get more residential housing units built within the CBD. In there and, and, you know, that provides, that helps downtown businesses. You know, brings customers to their front doors. It's, you know, I think people hope that commuter rail will return to, to be a functioning form of transportation. So it's accessible, the housing is accessible within walking to the commuter rail in there. You know, you, I, I think a second dimension is to provide housing that serves, you know, Winchester residents and people who worked in Winchester. On that. And so that includes seniors who would like to downsize, who want to get, get rid of a single family home and, you know, move into the town center.
Do you have just, just a follow up?
Real quick, please.
Just, just, and we can look at it after the meeting. It's just, I'm curious if the Council on Aging and the master plan and the housing production plan, because all three of those documents I've read, but not to the level of depth that I'm asking now, make specific quantifications or even qualifications of the need. But let's follow up on that afterwards.
In, in one, in, in 10 sec, in literally 10 seconds, we need everything. We need everything except for single family homes. We need rental, we need condo, we need singles, we need ones, twos and threes. We need as much of it near the transit as possible. And if, for the ones that are not, we can have intermixed in. But the short answer is we need everything.
Well, that makes.
Santa Claus, Brian.
It's, I mean, it's.
You didn't mention tiny houses. We need tiny houses.
All of it. Sure. Whatever. We need that. We need it all.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hope, I think, I think the board is done with their questions now. And then like to turn it over to the development team, if you want to chime in on how you feel that your development meets those particular PUD requirements.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that's me. I'm Ian Gillespie. Joined this evening by my colleagues, Jan Stebrugge and Paul Sutley, who are the makeup, the development team. As listening to John, I think we are all very fortunate to have somebody who has worked as hard as John has. And we have benefited greatly from his guidance. We are in a very uncomfortable position this evening. The board released publicly memos from a member part of the agenda with the agenda that were, in our opinion, highly opinionated. I must mention that this email under discussion is no ordinary email. So.
I just wanted to. Mr. Gillespie, I just want to.
Turn you over to our very competent attorney, Nick Shapiro. Nick, perhaps you could take the baton.
Excuse me, Mr. Gillespie, Mr. Shapiro. I want to remind you that this is the time that we've allotted for you to talk about how your project meets diversity requirements. If you wish to divert from that, then you will not have time at this session to talk about that. Is that your, is that your decision?
If, if Chair, if you would indulge me.
No.
Our.
Is anybody hearing Nick?
Can, can, can everyone hear me?
I'm not sure who's speaking.
My, my name is Nicholas Shapiro. I'm an attorney at Phillips and Anglin Boston, and I represent Tanconverse Place Alcy. And I would really appreciate the indulgence of being able to explain why my client is concerned with Ms. Dale's continuing to hear this matter. What I would like to explain for why I'm going to orally, orally move for Ms. Dale to recuse herself, the, the, the grounds for, for why we're asking. And in fact, the grounds for why we're asking come directly from a 2003 Superior Court decision in which Justice Laureate, an Associate Justice of Superior Court, annulled a decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals of Winchester for having not allowed a motion to recuse when there was prejudgment bias. And so if you, if, if the Chair would please indulge me, I, I spoke with Town Council this morning to explain the factual grounds for, for why we'd be asking to, for asking Ms. Dale to recuse herself from this matter this morning. But there is a difference as to what the legal basis for asking for that recusal is. And so that the record is clear. And frankly, in that 2003 litigation, at least the project applicant was allowed to actually move to recuse. So I, I would really beg the Chair's indulgence to allow my client that courtesy that was extended to citizens of Winchester in the past. So may I please be heard?
Yes, Mr. Shapiro, I would love to hear from our Town Council first as to what a motion to recuse from a non-member of the board actually means.
There's no such thing, but I understand what Mr. Shapiro meant. He's, he's requesting that Ms. Dale recuse herself, or I suppose requesting that the board take a motion. But I don't, I, I, it's up to the individual. It's not for the board to remove a member. So I, I think he's asking for, I think he's requesting them.
It's a request. It was referred to as a motion, Attorney Krieger in, in this case. So.
That's fine. I'm not criticizing anyone. I, but, but it's, it's, Mr. Jarius is right that there's no such thing as a, as a member of the public or applicant making a motion. So, but go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Please go ahead.
So I, I appreciate Town Council's reference to, to the Public Ethics statutes. However, the rea- the reason why we are asking the board to, to bring a motion to have Ms. Dale recuse herself is more basic than that. The reason why we're asking for recusal here is that, under Article 29 of the, of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights, every citizen in this Commonwealth is entitled to the impartial administration of justice. That, that right is also codified in the 14th, the due process clause of the 14th Amendment. Everybody has a right to an impartial decision maker. And the SJC and the Appeals Court and the trial courts of the Commonwealth have all interpreted these provisions as equally applicable, not just to courtroom proceedings, but also proceedings before quasi judicial boards. And, and in fact, there are broadly speaking, three bases upon which somebody should recuse themselves because they've demonstrated that they're not going to be able to honor their charge as an impartial arbiter of a matter in front of them. One of which is prejudgment bias. As you might imagine, if a juror sitting on a jury were to issue a written statement of hostility to a litigant, that would be grounds for that juror to be discharged. Likewise, if a judge issued an open letter criticizing a party sitting in front of him or her in a, in a matter in which the judge had to make a decision, that too would be sound grounds for recusal. And, and in point of fact, in the decision that forms the basis of what I am asking the board to do this evening, Pierce v Mulhern, Judge Laureate specifically opined that public comments and efforts to work against an applicant are precisely the types of things that demonstrate that somebody has a prejudgment bias that disqualifies them from deciding a matter before them. In this instance, there are four principal, though non-exclusive, issues that my client has that have been escalating most recently, and I'm going to take them, take them in reverse chronological order. The most recent matter was an email sent by Ms. Dale's husband. Now, I understand spouses are different people. So the fact that a husband has a problem with the project doesn't mean that a wife sitting on a board does. But that's not simply what we have here. The, the email that Mr. Dale sent to one of my client's landscape architects, apart from making it clear that he doesn't really like the particulars of this project, specifically made charges of dishonesty and deception in the presentations that have made, been made before this board. Also made intimations of untoward, untoward and inappropriate interactions in, in pre-application meetings between the planning department of this town and my client, and ended the email with a, a request either for our landscape architect to come clean with his deceptions or withdraw from representation. Now, that email was sent from Ms. Dale's husband's work account that listed Ms. Dale as a managing director of that business under his, under his signature. If one goes to the website for Mr. Dale's business, Ms. Dale is prominently displayed as the managing director of that business. So this is an email sent from Ms. Dale's business to somebody who works on my client's development team that if you read the email, it can't be really interpreted as anything other than an act of intimidation. Now, Ms. Dale, I, I appreciate Ms. Dale saying that she can, believes that she can act impartially and that she didn't have any knowledge of this email and that she had no input into the contents of that email. But I would point out that one of the many criticisms that Mr. Dale lodges against this project about the woo nerf that my clients are proposing is exactly the same as the second and equally disqualifying thing that Ms. Dale has been a participant in, which was authoring a 22-page memorandum addressed to the town planner with the instruction that it be included in the public comments. Now, all I, I, I'm a land use and real estate attorney. That's all I do. I have never seen an instance where a sitting member of, of any quasi judicial board has asked that a private document that they devised in reviewing an application be included in public comments. It's as if a judge is making comments about a matter in front of them and publishing it to the, to the outside world. Now, if you look at number 10 of the concerns that Ms. Dale lists in her, in her memorandum, I believe on page five or six, she makes the exact same point about the woo nerf that her husband made in the email, which it's a service entrance as somehow making it disqualifying as a woo nerf. So perhaps Ms. Dale had no input on the email, but husband and wife in this instance, they work together and they apparently have the same views of this project. Under those circumstances alone, I would say it's really inappropriate for Ms. Dale to continue to sit on this, regardless of representations about continued impartiality. But I've also come to learn from the client that in prior hearings, Mr. Dale has been, in, in prior Zoom proceedings, Mr. Dale has been sitting side by side with Ms. Dale and ostensibly feeding her comments. I've also been advised that previously Ms. Dale made an intemperate comment about something untoward or inappropriate going on during peer review meetings with the planner and the development team, as if there's some kind of backroom dealing going on. Now, Ms. Dale can make whatever kind of representation she wishes about impartiality, but you'll, you'll have to forgive my client. If, if an objective person sitting in my client's shoes, it, it just does not seem plausible that Ms. Dale can be impartial. She has made her hostility to this project known. She's made it public. And my client is entitled to an impartial, neutral decision maker. I think her neutrality is impossible at this point. And that's why I would request the board to bring a motion to have Ms. Dale recuse herself. And if, if that doesn't work, please be advised that my client is continuing with these proceedings under protest and objects vigorously so to the continuation of Ms. Dale being part of the board that is going to decide this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Krieger, do you have any suggestions on how we proceed at this point?
This would be my advice to anyone in this situation. So I, I make no judgment on anything that Mr. Shapiro just described. At this point, it's really up to Ms. Dale to think about the very, the various fact, factors or, or facts that Mr. Shapiro described, if, if, you know, if they're true. And whether in light of all those things, she really needs to make a considered decision whether she can be impartial. If so, then she may remain. And I think the, she and the entire board understand what Mr. Shapiro just said, that they're, that they're continuing with her on the board. If that's her decision, continuing under protest in the sense that they reserve the right to raise this issue. I take it that this is what he means at a minimum. They reserve the right, right, right to raise this issue on appeal if she's a deciding vote against the project or in favor of onerous conditions that they object to. They can, they can appeal and say she shouldn't have been part of the proceedings. They may have other remedies, and I'm not, I'm not trying to characterize what they may do. But I think that would be the, the essential meaning of proceeding under protest. You know, if the board wants to take a, well, if Ms. Dale is prepared to, to to make her decision now, fine. If Ms. Dale wants to take a recess and think about it, that would, you know, a short recess would be, would be appropriate. And there are a lot of people waiting on the line, but this is an important matter. So Sally, it's really, it's really up to you. If you still think you can be impartial, notwithstanding the everything Mr. Shapiro described, then you're entitled to make that judgment.
So do you have, shall I? As our chair?
Uh, I think it's up to you, Sally. It's.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to speak if it's.
I, I only, my only, I only had one question, more question of you, Mr. Krieger. And that is that I am not a lawyer, so I cannot judge on what, I assume Mr. Shapiro was telling us, what he believes is, is the case law, which underlines there, this client's or, or what he just said. Can you give us some idea as to whether you agree with his analysis?
Well, I haven't gone back to look at a 2003 Superior Court decision that he cited. I'll take him at his word for his description of it. In this case, I think the board is fully considering the issue. It sounded there that there were a motion to recuse for bias was not allowed by the board. And that's what, that's what I got from Mr. Shapiro's description. So I think the board has sort of solved that problem by wrestling with this issue and having Ms. Dale wrestle with it. And the citations to the Massachusetts Constitution, et cetera, shouldn't surprise anybody. I mean, I think everybody going into this proceeding would have assumed that, that an applicant is entitled to an impartial decision. We don't have to make detailed comparisons to what a judge might or might not do in court. It seems to be a basic principle of justice, even at the local board level. So that's fine. I don't have any cora with the principles here. Impartiality is what we're trying to ensure. The, my only other comment, I, I, well, I don't, I don't, I didn't hear or see some of the things you described. So for example, the fourth thing, the inappropriate comment about the peer review, I have no idea what that was or whether it, whether it shows, shows any bias. The 22-page memo, I have a procedural problem with the, a board member's comments being included as public comment, but it's not a bias issue. It may be an open meeting law issue. but it's not a bias issue. It may be an open meeting law issue. It may be just a other procedural issue, but it's not, it doesn't show any bias. I will say that woo-nurf is a, which may, it may strike listeners as an incredible coincidence that both husband and wife mentioned a woo-nurf, but woo-nurf is in the design guidelines for the Central Business District in the regulations that we discussed earlier. It's defined there. There's an example of it shown there. And if the applicant is describing Converse Place as proposed to function as a woo-nurf, no surprise that people pick up on that term. So that by itself doesn't bother me either. The, I fully agree that Mr. Dale should not be talking offline or in the same screen or not in the same screen to Ms. Dale. And again, this would apply to any other board members. Sally, I'm not singling anybody out, but if an avowed opponent of the project, which I think it's fair to say Mr. Dale is from his email, is trying to influence or pass, you know, notes or questions to a sitting board member during a hearing, I would say that's not an appropriate practice. Whether it shows bias by the board member is a different story. I just, I think it's, that's not something that should be done for a number of reasons. So we come back to Mr. Dale's email, the first factor that Mr. Shapiro mentioned. And he said it is no ordinary email. He's absolutely right. He took a shot at the town planner for meeting with the applicant's team four or five times when the bylaw refers to only one meeting or a meeting. There's nothing wrong with that. There's no indication that anybody was greasing anything, to use his term. Brian Kelly certainly did nothing wrong by meeting on a complicated project several times with the applicant's team. He was simply doing his job. So I don't, I don't agree with some of what Mr. Dale said in the email. And the tone is certainly much more strident than one usually sees, and it does have allegations of unethical behavior or deceptive behavior. However, in my view, if Ms. Dale says she had nothing to do with it, didn't see it, didn't review it, didn't edit it, didn't discuss it before it went out. If she truly had nothing to do with it and was as surprised by it as everybody else, then it really doesn't matter what it says. If she was involved in any way, then that email is strong enough, potent enough that I would think that she would have difficulty being impartial if she was involved in that email. But she has said so far, and she can reaffirm if it's true, that she was not involved in that email in any way. So if that's true, I don't care what the email said. Those are my thoughts on the specifics raised by Mr. Shapiro. It's not a, it's not a it's not a pretty picture, but it is not as damning necessarily as has been argued. And again, it's up to Ms. Dale to basically search her conscience and determine whether she can be impartial. And I take it there won't be any further instances of Mr. Dale being in the same room or on the same screen as her, communicating privately with her. He can be wherever he wants, but he can't communicate privately with her, Mr. Chairman, any more than your, you know, a relative of yours could be communicating privately with you if they have views on the project. Again, I'm not trying to make this as personal as it unfortunately has to be. But Ms. Dale, based on everything I've said and everything you heard from Mr. Shapiro, it's up to you. If you have nothing to do with that email and can be impartial, then let's proceed.
Thank you very much, Art. I really appreciate that. Sally, the floor is yours.
So yes, I had no idea this email was being written or sent, and if I had, I would have stridently argued against it. I would have said it's not a good idea. I do want to talk about the instance where the night that I had a planning board meeting, the morning of which I had had cataract surgery on my eye. And people will remember that I made light of the motion because I put a scarf over my bandage so that I wouldn't look like a war victim. I had asked my husband to come in and help me arrange my papers on my desk because I was really struggling with vision. He stayed in my study. And at a certain point in the meeting, he was expressing his strong feelings on the subject by passing notes to me. And I, being only a single-minded person perhaps, or just I don't have a broad bandwidth for sensory input, asked him to please not pass me notes and not talk to me. And I was grateful when Diab said, Sally, who was ever in the room, could you ask them to leave? It was reinforcing of my message to Dennis to do so, and he did. But his whole presence in my study for the Zoom meeting in the first place was because I was trying to deal with just being able to see what was on my desk because I'd never had cataract surgery before. I have another one coming up in a week, and I will handle there's actually a planning board meeting that evening, and I will handle my vision problems on my own. With regards, let's see, there was four things that Mr. Shapiro pointed to. If my memorandum that I, I'm assuming he's speaking of the one that cites the different sections of the bylaw that have to do, that of the bylaw and the regulations that I saw warranted discussion or exploration. If that's the one he's talking about, I am really sorry if that was a violation of open meeting law to send that to, or to ask that that be in the packet. I wanted it to go to the planning board. When I say in the packet, I mean that. If that was a mistake, you know, to write my opinion, I don't think it was 22 pages. I thought the thing I wrote was like 15, but maybe I'm thinking of something else. But my purpose in asking that it go in the packet was so that my peers on the planning board and our chair could all see it and comment on it when the time is right in the flow of the meetings. But I had no interest in violating open meeting law.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying that you did. I'm certainly not admitting on my, on my partial understanding of the facts.
Yeah.
I'm not publicly acknowledging any violation of the open meeting law, but that practice raises that concern depending on how else it's circulated or publicized at the time.
Right. So that's, that's super helpful. Thank you. And then there is a mention that I made an untoward interpretive comment about the peer review. I'm reading my notes. They're not entirely legible. My only comment about the peer review is that I'm extremely grateful for Mr. Chen's presence. I think any really major project, especially this particular project, because it's the largest, first large project to be constructed in our town center in this sort of period of zoning code and regulation code. I'm just very grateful to have a third-party reviewer and a fresh perspective. I'm just going through my notes for Mr. Shapiro. But I think that given that I had absolutely no idea this memo was going out and was coming out, and if it had gone, and if he'd asked me, I would have told him it's a bad idea. I'm not sure what else to say. I'm not sure what else to say.
Well, you said you had no involvement in that email. So if you are concluding that you can be fully impartial in the rest of this proceeding and in the entire proceeding and with respect to a decision on this application, say so. If you have doubts about your own impartiality, then you should recuse yourself.
So let me, let me talk about my impartiality. My impartiality is compromised only to the extent that I want the building that's put on that site to be, to serve the highest and best use for the town for enlivening our village, increasing the economic vitality of our village, increasing housing, particularly affordable housing, making sure that any of the logistical aspects of the building don't have a negative impact on the flow of our downtown with regards to traffic or water flooding or whatever, all of those sort of hard, hard quantifiable issues. I'm really psyched to see this property developed. And so my impartiality, I believe, is intact. I, I, I'm not opposed to seeing this property developed according to the terms of the PUD.
So the key question, Sally, is not what you want to see or don't want to see, but whether you're committed to applying the terms of the bylaw, the regulations, the guidelines as faithfully as you can to whatever outcome.
I commit to do that exactly. Art and team.
Thank you. I don't know. Well, if the board wants to discuss this, or does, I don't know how we move forward on this at the moment. I think that each of us has to be taken at our word. That's all we've got. So I don't. If the board wants to discuss this, please go ahead. And I'm guessing from the lack of a hands up that the board is satisfied with what has with the current state of things, with Sally still being on the board or still being working on this project. Echen, did you want to say something?
I think that the added, the added sort of drama of this, I think I'm looking to the end of the vote and wondering just I just think that the drama is a lot. And it's unfortunate and I have much to say about it, but I just think it's a real unfortunate part of the process, one of the first, you know, that we're dealing with, this beauty. We have many, but it's too much, there's a lot of friction. So that's all, really.
Okay, I think that our actions will speak as to our impartiality, and that's the only thing that we can be measured by is our actions. And I believe this board will continue to be as human, as impartial as is humanly possible. But again, it's our actions which will convince anyone. So I think we should move forward. And at this point, let's see, let's get back to our agenda. Okay, so at this point, we are approximately at where we would have been if we started talking about design and speaking with the what it means to, what a design consultant does and what, or I should say, what role they play. I do want to hear more from, at this point, I would like, I think it's important that we hear from the board on what they think of the requirements, the diversity requirements for the PUD and how this particular project fits into that. And if the board has questions of the developer, I think it would be appropriate for them to ask it of them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a suggestion?
Please do.
You, before that discussion about recusal, you were about to give the applicant a few minutes to describe why they think the project meets the criteria of the Central Business District. I don't think the applicant should lose that opportunity because they devoted that time and more to the recusal issue. There were some issues that were worthy of discussion about partiality or impartiality, and I think so the applicant was entitled to raise them. And I would, I would recommend that you give them an opportunity, if they want, to do what they would have done if that discussion hadn't happened, even though you've lost that time.
Okay, I think that's a fair thing to ask. So if someone for the development team wants to take a few minutes to describe their approach to fulfilling the PUD requirement, please do so.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. What we'd love to do is have a conversation with the board this evening to the extent possible. We have a reference presentation we would like to show you, but it's quick, and we want to stop along the way for discussion. We hope the visuals will help us talk about where we have been and the guidance that the board has given us in the past, so why we are where we are today. With that baseline information, we really look forward to a dialogue with you about where we are going next. As we're talking this evening, please feel free to interrupt us and ask questions. We'd like to have a conversation with the board. And also, for those of you who are unfamiliar with David Hesene, I hope you will look him up. He's highly credentialed. He doesn't want me to mention those credentials. I will mention that he has been on Boston's review board, the BCDC, for better than a dozen years. I forget how long, David, forgive me. So he has been on both sides of the table. David is humble. He's extraordinarily bright, and I think you will find him very easy to work with, as do we. With that, I'd like to turn it over to David.
Well, thank you. Ian, thanks very much. And Brian, if you could let Rob Clocker be a co-host, I would appreciate that. I do want to open by first saying that I'm struck by the fact that, as everyone talks about the project from the various points of view that they have, that I think everybody wants the same thing, which is a beautiful project in the heart of the village of Winchester that you all and we all love so much and that meets the objectives, not just of the town and the town's housing goals and the town's planning goals, but is also a buildable project that meets our client's goals. And I'm here tonight to try and help you all, help us all sort of get to that, get to that point. And that's really my, my goal here. I'm joined by David DeBanken and Rob Clocker from my office. We care deeply about this project. We've been at it for a while. And I'm going to try and do my best to move us quickly through some slides. But as Ian pointed out, we do want this to be a dialogue. So there are, and I know that there are many members of the board who have not gone through this process. Diab, you're the voice of continuity here. So I'm hoping that you might be able to chime in here and there. And I'll be pausing at a few key moments to invite any questions or comments as we move through this. It is, I do understand how important this is to the town and how central it is to the identity of the town, and we take that very seriously. So, so next slide, please. I'm not going to dwell on this. I just want folks to know that the history of this this discussion began in January of 2020. We were very graciously given six opportunities to meet with the planning board from January to June. And during that period of time, we met with the previous design consultant, Dennis Carlon, on a couple of meetings as well. At the end of that process, we presented the results of our work to the select board in mid-July. And after returning to the planning board about a year later, we were, it was suggested that we file the project and begin this next set of discussions, which is where we are now. In addition to that, I think it's worth noting that we have presented to the Design Review Committee and the Winchester Historical Commission and generally received very, very favorable comments from all of those discussions. Next slide, please. comments from all of those discussions. Next slide, please. We all know the site sits at the heart of this, at the town, along Mount Vernon and at the, facing the Mill Pond, surrounded by many of the landmarks of Winchester, including Town Hall, the library, school, et cetera. Next slide, please. At our first planning board meeting, I wanted to, and I do suggest potentially that some of the new board members actually look through that presentation in particular, because at that time, we did a rather extensive site analysis of Winchester. Its, its buildings, its, its framework, its edges, its lines of, of travel. And, and that was something that we shared with the, of the previous board as a launching off point. So I don't want people to think that that didn't happen. It did and it's available. Next slide, please. At the conclusion of that particular discussion, as part of a zoning analysis, we looked at an FAR three on this site in three different configurations, basically a four, five and six story configuration. And without getting into the weeds on this too much, the four-story version really doesn't function as a residential floor plate. It's an office floor plate. The fifth story is a five-story version, which was a little bit more challenging, but also created more green space resulting open space. And then there was a six-story option, which was a slimmer footprint that was more or less the standard footprint for housing, which provided the most open space. It's worth noting that in that abstract discussion, that the planning board at that time expressed a preference for the six-story scheme. And I just want to pause there. Diab or, or anyone, if they have any questions, Diab, I, I just wanted to ask, is that, that's correct, right? I mean, that was how we started our process.
I, I think what, what happened was that the board wanted maximum open space on the lot. And that's what drew them to that, that configuration. That's my recollection.
I see Kurt has a question. Kurt?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Hesene, thanks. So I, I'm the newest member here. So this is really helpful to give me some context and background. I had one quick question leading into that slide, which is you provided three different scenarios that assume a 3.0 FAR, which I know is the absolute max under the PUD. Is there a reason why the only scenarios you looked at defaulted to that max as opposed to exploring at 2.5 or a 2.7? Just curious to get any background on why you only showed scenarios at a 3.0.
That was the, 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 the client's goals for the site were at a 3.0 FAR. So I don't know, Ian, if you want to comment on, on the direction that you gave us exactly, but, but that was our charge.
No, David's exactly right, but that was, remember that we were, remember spring, we were intimately aware of what happened in 2015 at town meeting. We were intimately aware of what the planning board was looking for in the CBD. We could have gone to a 2.5 under a special permit. We had a lot of discussion with the planner, with then members of the planning board. Right, here's a reference. This is the planning board's presentation at town meeting. We've shown you this before, but the, the idea from the planning board at the time was monumentality in this PUD area. So we could have gone to a 2.5 or under a special permit. But there was a specific reason why. And we've looked at this PUD, you and I together. We see how small it is and how specific an area it was of discussion by the town at the time. And the idea was, as John Subir said earlier, it was to bring housing, bring density to the downtown. So that's why we did it.
I maybe, and, and unless anyone else has some questions, I could keep going because I'm sure some of these questions will recur. But are there other questions at this point before I keep going?
I just have one comment to add to Diab's explanation of the board's desire for the increased open space. I think also in the same meeting, we discussed making sure that the massing of the building was dealt with in a way that would step back to, to balance not only the open space, but the, you know, the massing that would fit into the context of the adjacent buildings and, and site.
I think, and thank you, Cheryl. I, I think that's exactly right. We did talk about that. I think if we go back to that slide for one moment, we can we go back to that slide, Rob? Okay. Yeah, I mean, you're beginning to see the implication of a slight setback on the, on the, on the top floor. But that was definitely discussed as, you know, how can, how can that, that impact be, be mitigated? I'm going to keep going. I think that the next slide is an important slide. I'll just talk about it very quickly. Whoops, no, the, the, the previous slide. It is worth noting that, you know, in, you know, we looked at everything that the town produced in great detail. These were the examples that are in your guidelines of three buildings of different styles from contemporary to transitional to, to traditional that were all in the five-story range. And so I think that that's just something that's worth noting. This comes from your own documents. Next slide, please. And that was also consistent, frankly, with what we began to see around town. There are buildings of that size, some of them handsome, like the Elmwood building that's six stories tall and others that, you know, maybe are somewhat less handsome, but, but are also in the four to five story range. So the town already has a pattern of, of buildings. This is not an unprecedented scale in the town. Next slide, please. At the second planning board meeting, we came with three design concepts related to the six-story scheme to discuss the possibility of how to maximize open space and where that open space should be. And without going through the entire presentation, the, the, the slide that's sort of the punchline was this slide, which showed three different schemes, one which essentially had a bar building and a green space facing the fire station that extended directly to the waterfront. A second, which eased a green space around the edge, edges of the Mill Pond. And a third scheme, which pulled the building back from the edge of the Mill Pond in order to create a significant space at the water's edge. That was a publicly accessible space that could be sort of seen and acted upon from a number of different points of view. And that was the direction that received the best reaction at that meeting. And I didn't know if anybody had any questions or comments at this point. If not, I'll keep going. Next slide. At the third meeting, we developed that six, that six-story scheme. And to basically illustrate how that might play out in a little bit more detail. And you can see that plan here. And to Cheryl's point, we did make efforts to significantly shape and pull back the top floor of that building to begin to illustrate the character of the open spaces around the building, including the, the Woonerf, of the firm, the former Converse Place Woonerf. And I do have to emphasize that this is a proposal that has at least half the units facing Converse Place. So we are extremely committed to making that an attractive street for our, our own selfish reasons, if not, not for the town as well. This was a view of the six-story building that we presented at that time. You can see that we were massing from four to five to six stories, four stories on Mount Vernon, five facing Town Hall, and then a setback six-story. Next slide, please. And the way that that might appear from the bridge over the, over the Mill Pond, with the idea that that building was pulling away, allowing for better views of the Town Hall. And I think it's also worth noting that the PUD area that we're discussing also covers the white awning, the building with white awning China Sky and, and the buildings immediately to the left. So that is a, a factor as you think about this. The feedback that we got at that meeting was that they'd like to see, that the, the board wanted to see a five-story version by, for comparison. In other words, that there was an appreciation for the green space that was provided, but some discomfort with the six-story height. And was there a way to, in a sense, come somewhere in between those two scenarios? Question?
I just want to point out that I was stuck about five slides back. So I hope everyone else saw the five slides, but I think I remember all of them.
Okay.
All of those things. I've seen them enough times.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry to make
It's just
live as so many times, but, but I do think it's important for those who weren't a part of this to sort of understand the, the history. So I'll, I'll keep going. At our fourth meeting, we did refinements to the six-story scheme. And I want to emphasize, this is not a design yet. This was really very conceptual. We were not getting into the nature of the, the details. This was really an illustrative design process. So we showed a refined version of the six-story scheme and we developed an alternate five-story scheme, which I can show you side by sides here. I think the, we were able to show, and this is by the way, a, a time that we had already begun to engage with Dennis Carlon and getting some of his feedback on, on the, on the, on the design work. And we were showing here on the five-story, six-story scheme, a, a pretty significant oval at the green space, a shorter Woonerf, if you will, that, and, and more open space at the water. And the impact of the five-story scheme, which was trying to hold on to many of those features, obviously push, spread the building out on the site a little bit more in order to distribute that floor area in a slightly different way. So we showed this work. We showed views. This was the six-story scheme versus the next slide, I think, showed the five stories. And you see the height comes down, but the length gets significantly longer. And I mean, I, I could go into the massing ideas of trying to break down the, the, the facades into more of a townhouse rhythm that was felt actually quite consistent in my mind to some of the imagery that was in the, the traditional imagery that was in the, the, your, your town documents about the guidelines. Next slide shows that same view as the six-story scheme from the bridge. And then what it would mean with a five-story scheme, basically the building comes forward and comes down. The feedback that we got at that meeting was that the five-story scheme was preferred, but the board wanted to see further development. So there were a number of architectural comments that we received about this five-story scheme that we were basically given as, as homework to go and think about. Questions so far?
David, if I could just add two, two of those comments, I think if you go back two slides to the view for Mount Vernon, one of the comments we heard was that they felt this scheme in particular, which had a sort of staggered facade facing Mount Vernon, they felt was busy and it was competing with, with Town Hall facing in that direction. And they asked us to sort of flatten it out, calm it down. And then there were comments, I think both in this view and the view facing towards the Main Street Bridge about the, the boxiness of what we were calling dormer shaped volumes on the top and wanting to enliven that upper story more, make it celebrate the sky more and be further broken down. So that's some of the, some of what we heard going into further development of the five-story scheme.
Thank you, David. I'm almost done, actually. So the next slide, planning board meeting five, was the refinements that David just talked about. So we can go to that next slide. We started to look at the landscape in much more detail, the different features, the, the, the ovals, the pathways, et cetera. The, and at this point, it's also worth noting that we were showing the retail restaurant on Mount Vernon Street and the lobby was located towards the Mill Pond. So one of the comments that we got was the idea that it would be better to put retail on the water side to enlay, enliven the public space and make it feel more public. And that would it be possible to have a livelier ground floor with residential uses facing east and Town Hall instead of amenities and commercial space? For example, a series of, of entrances and so forth that could be, that could make that feel more activated. So we took note of that and came back with this design that was really intended to provide a cleaner, richer brick facade that wrapped the building expressed at four stories with a, a roof scape of fifth, of, of the expression of the fifth story as a roof scape that was set back in, you know, a copper-like metal that even included elements that, that recalled chimneys and so forth. Next slide, please. And this was the view of the, the building from the bridge. I have to say, this is also, you know, I hesitate to say this. By the way, Phil, it's great to see you and welcome aboard and we look forward to working with you. Phil and I have known each other for many years, so it's, it's really nice to, to see him here tonight. It is worth noting that this, that, that the previous consultant was very enthusiastic about this particular scheme and gave us some very, very flattering commentary on it. Nonetheless, there was concern from the board that the retail location should be reoriented, that the fifth floor was still too busy, too articulated. Maybe let's eliminate these chimney-like elements. Let's just simplify this building a bit. Which brings us to our special permit application. And before I get to that, I, 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 well, okay. And so, so I didn't know if anybody had any questions before we get to that process. It's important to note that that's where we left off. And that there was then about a year, but before we came back, there was the meetings with the select board and so forth. And about a year of an interim before we came back to you and were encouraged to file us the application. And during the course of filing that application, knowing that we were still very much in development, we did try and take some of the commentary that we had gotten at that last meeting essentially, and tried to incorporate that into the proposal that we ultimately have submitted for your consideration. And I have just maybe a couple of slides on that, but I didn't know if anybody had any questions about that or Diab, you wanted to, you know, you were sort of the handoff there. If there's anything you wanted to, to add.
I, I loved that design, to be honest. But
Well, you know, and I'll be honest, I, I kind of liked it too. I was, I was kind of excited about that too. And I really, you know, I personally, I, I, I I want to be careful. I, this is something that I'm, you know, really concerned about. And I say this in all honesty to this board. You know, construction costs are going up. Things are getting more and more complicated. This is not an inexpensive building to build with the details that we're showing. I am concerned about, I am concerned about that because I want to make sure that the building that we build is rich, like so much of the what I call legacy architecture that exists in the village and in the area. So let me go back to this and I can wrap this up and then hopefully So let me go back to this and I can wrap this up and then hopefully we can just, I, we can continue to ask questions because we are looking for some direction from you. So this is the the most recent landscape plan that, as you can see, the oval is now sort of been expressed as almost merging into the mill pond. The, we have been showing beginning to indicate, and our landscape architect is in here tonight, some of the the paving patterns, some of the paving ideas. You can see the individual stoops and unit entrances that exist along the path, along the waterfront. The fact that we have shifted a cafe retail use to the water side to help activate the lawn and the waterfront and have flipped the lobby of the building to Mount Vernon Street. And on the, yeah, and here you can see that plan. We also, by the way, went to a lift system for parking, which greatly reduced the amount of the footprint that was dedicated to ramping, which is never very attractive. And that was in part to make the, to limit the service areas on the woo-nurf to the absolute minimum by wrapping the retail around, by wrapping the lobby around, et cetera. Next slide, please. In terms of the diversity of housing units, we have tried to create a real mix of ones, twos, threes and studios. I, I, the, the building, we, we have work to do on these units. This is still a diagram. But the intention is to have that kind of a mix, the unit diversity you see in the lower right. So in terms of responding to the unit diversity issue that has been brought up earlier in the night, that was how we tried to respond to that. Next slide, please. The significant setback at the, at the fifth floor. So now we have a five-story build. Like when we had a six-story building, we set back the top floor. Now we have a five-story building where again, setting back the the fifth floor quite significantly in order to create green spaces and terraces on all four edges of the building. And next, and this is the building that we submitted. You can see the four-story expression on Mount Vernon, the goal of pushing that fifth floor back so that it is essentially invisible or appears to become part of the roof scape of the upper floor. And again, we're very happy to work with you on, on what this might look like and how this might be configured. The simpler expression, almost townhouse-like expression of the facade facing the town hall. Next slide, please. The view from across the water. We've tried to simplify the building, the rotunda at the corner, which was marking the lobby and felt like appropriate at a lobby, has been removed in favor of something a little quieter. There's a cafe space and that's set back fifth floor. And I think is that it? Oh, yes. And so, and so I guess I, 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 I really hope that we can move this discussion forward. We're really eager to move this discussion forward on the basis of the design. I, I guess what I would say is that the P U D zoning framework and this issue of the F A R three point O and how it's configured has a lot to do with the massing and open space that we have described from earlier on in the process. That in turn impacts the number and diversity of the units. So we need some real guidance from, from this board on, on our decisions thus far in terms of how they impact those three elements. We would like confirmation that we have located the retail in the correct place. Obviously, traffic and parking is its own issue and we will talk about that in its own time. But before, you know, we, we, I can't wait to talk about how to refine the architectural elements and the public space design. But quite honestly, I think we need to get through some of the first, first items on this list before we can do that. So I, I thank you for your indulgence in terms of letting me bring I, I, as Ian said, I've been on a board for, I, it's 20 years. So I know what it's like to miss a meeting or a couple of meetings and, and, and try and get back up to speed on a project. So this is such an important project. Thank you for, for, for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. If, why don't, why don't, you change your, you've got your hand up.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I, it's a lot of work. Let's see. I, I wonder a little bit about how the the framework and our timeframe. And if we, when we have time to talk about program, if the program is set. I know sort of the first couple of iterations were, you know, retail on the ground floor, more retail. And it was, I think, is one particular member who, who wanted residential. And it just seems like my gut reaction is, is to have an activated ground floor. But I wonder, you know, at what point can we talk about this part again? Is it now? Or is it, is it later? Or should we focus on the three point O?
I think we will. We only have half an hour left this evening. So, excuse me. I think we will have, we were having several meetings that are concentrating on design. So we'll have a chance to talk about that then. This evening, the main things was to work through the, the board's feeling about the meeting the requirement for the three point O. Because if, if, if that, if the board isn't comfortable with that, then everything sort of has to go in a very different direction. So we also want to, we do have our, our new design consultant online. I hope he's still online. I hope he's back from Greece. I don't know where he is. But we need to talk about.
I am here. I am here.
Okay, yeah. I, I, I keep losing people on my screen. It's the Zoom curse. So I think that one of the things that the board needs to talk about is what sort of direction we want to, how we work with our, our new consultants to move forward. So I have questions. So that's, that's what I, the two things I think we need to discuss this evening to, so that we can move forward. So I think it's, it's now, what time is it? It is nine twenty-eight. So if we could have a short discussion on the, the P U D requirement of diversity of housing, see how the board feels about that. I, to be honest, I don't know that we take a vote now. Brian, do you have any, unfortunately, I told Art he could take the rest of the evening off. Brian, do you have any? Now that you've achieved your, your almost certified planner status, do you have any guidance you can give us? Is this something we can vote on or just give a sort of a consensus on?
So I don't think now is the point in time where we would vote on a waiver. I think we would say whether you generally, whether you think it meets the condition based upon the, excuse me, based upon, you know, the conversation this evening, both with Art and and John Serbeer of the Housing Partnership Board. Not necessarily a vote, but certainly a direction, because it is, it is something that you would have to determine that could definitely, like David has seen said, really does kind of affect the open space significantly, which seems to be a real big part. So I, I don't think a vote is necessary. But if there's any, I think, cause for concern for, for some, for some members, now would be a time to, to raise that concern.
Yeah. So why don't we?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's, it's Ian Gillespie. If I could just make a clarification. We put, we asked the architects to start with the largest number of units that could go into this building, roughly speaking. And some of the units don't work particularly well, but you'd start with the highest number because then the tail that wags the dog is really the parking. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough parking for the highest number. We don't actually expect at the end of the day to have sixty units. And I think Mr. Subir has done a great job. Your memo, which was included in the documents today has, I don't know, paragraph six or seven, the partnership suggestion that we have fewer studios and more one beds and twos. So I just wanted to let the board know that the sixty is nothing that we particularly care about. We were trying to do the most diversity we could. And I think the partnership has said, cool it on some of the diversity with the studios. Let's look at combining and having more ones and twos. We're very open to that. So that whole discussion is, is in the air. Yes, David?
If I could, if I could just put a little color on that for, for the, the board's benefit. Because the building is lower and a bit broader, the small studio type units are particularly difficult to achieve in that kind of a footprint. So I think that, that, that's something that, that's one of the reasons why landing on the the, the, the massing, if you will, the height and massing is actually quite critical to working back into the plans and really figuring out how many high-quality units, because we only want high-quality units in here. How many high-quality units can actually be accommodated in the footprint that we are actually developing? So it's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing. I think that the diversity of units is an important issue, but if I may, I would say that, that one of the very big issues is, does the, does the board agree that a project can be achieved in this height and format? That in, to my view, has precedent in the town and has been, while being a little bit bigger, that's part of the goals of the P U, of the P U D, trying to bring more housing into town. And also is consistent with some of the imagery that was indicated as being part of the goals for, for, for the site. So I'm trying to understand at a, at a high level, is, you know, we need to know that, full stop. And then the, the diversity of units is something that I would imagine we could work back and forth with you on to make sure that we get the best possible mix within the configuration with units that work within the configuration that we're trying to develop. And that gets to E Ching's question about whether units should land on the ground or not, whether there should be more activation. I mean, I think that's like, it's all part of a big nest of, of problems that we're trying to solve, if that makes sense.
I, I agree. The problem is, is that the, the only reason you get a three point O is if you have this diversity of units. So acknowledging that the exact mix of units may change. In particular, a number of the public comments were about the livability of these, these narrow, single-bedroom studios. Obviously, that was, that's something that needs to be addressed, but we you get the three point O is providing this diversity. So that is, the big question is, does this board feel like this project will, albeit with some tweaks as are required, will it pass that threshold so that you get the massing that, that the design seems to require? And so that's, that's really our, if, if the board, I give the board, we get like ten minutes to discuss that. I was trying to speak, but I don't know who.
Sorry, it's Kurt. I was just layering on to your question. And maybe this is a question for Mr. Asin or Mr. Gillespie. I mean, assuming the number of units shrinks from sixty down to another number, you know, once you figure out ideal unit configurations, would the number of affordable units then shrink in a corresponding way? I think right now nine are proposed.
It would be proportionate per the zoning.
Okay. So then, then I guess, yeah, where I'm at is I kind of agree with you. It seems like it's hard to to a hundred percent come to a conclusion on evaluating the diversity of the unit mix until we know the unit mix and how many. You know, for, I mean, I think we heard from Brian that no matter what, we need these units. What, regardless of whether they're two bedrooms, one bedroom studios, but it would certainly be helpful if we had a little bit more guidance, maybe from the applicant as far as where they hope to end up in terms of maybe the ideal unit mix, if it's not sixty.
Well, we would, we would work on that. I think, you know, again, as David has said, we have a mix of issues. And the biggest one is the P U D and the, the massing. Once we get the massing, we can figure out what the unit mix is. We know we have enough parking. So at this point, we can do, you know, whatever you want in terms of the number of units. What we've done in the past and suggested in the past is that we work with partnership, particularly on the issue of affordable and with design review also. In terms of the, the diversity of housing, I think it's fair to say that the, the partnership has a very, you know, strong sense of what that means. And we certainly look forward to working with them. And I think John has already opined that he'd rather have more ones and twos. And as it happens, so would we. So we'll do whatever we are asked to do with those.
I mean, one suggestion I might make is that this is exactly the kind of thing that, that Brian and Philip could, could help navigate. And in terms of like a, a, a working session where we looked at the, the footprints and we presented a series of, of different, you know, what is fifty units looks like, what is fifty-three units look like in terms of, you know, a workable mix of units, getting Phil's professional expertise, you know, confirming that, that these are actually viable. And, you know, Brian understanding the goals of the housing partnership. And then, you know, theoretically coming back to you with that. But I think that, you know, with some of the history that we have, we're a little skittish about that. But, but if we could, if we could figure out a path towards that, it could be more about a proportion. You know, percentages of units that are associated rather than actual numbers. And then we figure out what the numbers are. The building is only so big.
It's also, oh, sorry, David. It's also important, I think you would say, David, we, we do need to know. Remember that we moved the retail at the board's behest from Mount Vernon back. I know member Wolf has mentioned that she would rather have the retail on Mount Vernon. It, we are, you know, we have some ideas, but we, we were trying to accommodate the board on that. But that, that, that sets up a crucial element of where the entrance to the building goes.
I, I agree that that's an important discussion, but right now, we, we still have this, I think, this, this it's a fork in the road. If we decide that there, that this provides the diversity of housing required to get you the three point O, that is the most important issue on the table. Where the, you know, the rest is all, so if you're talking about between forty and or should I say fifty and sixty units versus forty and sixty units, that's an important thing to know. Getting back to, I think, where Kurt's going is that what is a realistic number of units that you would, that you would, like, David, you said that you would have some scenarios that you could present to, to Brian and Philip. The question is, would those between, you said fifty to sixty, which gives us a range that we can look at. So the board could say conditionally, if you're within this range of units, we can work with you on the diversity of units. And that would be enough for us to say conditionally, we are in agreement.
Just a question for my colleague who, David, is, did I, is that correct? Between fifty and sixty units, is that correct? Or, or do we not know?
We could achieve fifty units. I mean, we could combine units. If, I, I guess, I, I'm not sure of the question. Are you saying if we reduce studios, would we land at fifty-something units? I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe so.
Well, I think by way of scale, the originals, David's, were forty-six.
That's right.
So we started, what you saw before was forty-six. So as, you know, we're somewhere, Mr. Chairman, somewhere around fifty, call it, you know, we can, we went to more because of this diversity issue. We now have the partnership opining, you don't need that much diversity. So we're somewhere in that range.
Yeah, I, I would, I would also just say, we did add, I, I think, five units at the ground floor based on feedback from the board last be, last spring, early summer. So that added five units. If the feeling of the board is, is now that we should eliminate units in the ground floor and increase retail, then that would instantly remove those five and bring the number down to fifty-five. And then we're working from that to respond to the partnership and reduce the number of studios and add ones and twos. So I, I think you're right, Ian. It is back into the high forties, fifty, maybe.
Yeah, as I look at the plans as we're talking, that makes sense. And I see that there's some hands. Yeah, as I look at the plans as we're talking, that makes sense. And I see that there's some hands raised, so I just.
E Ching. You need to unmute yourself, please.
All right. Um, I just want to emphasize that we're talking about a diversity of housing and not number of housing. So I would argue that, you know, any housing, like like Brian was saying, is necessary and the maximum amount of housing on this lot at the PUD, at the FAR is is crucial. But, you know, any number of housing is better than, you know, a a six story building with no housing and then a surface parking lot, right? So I would say, you know, the the key phrase that we're we're trying to determine is diversity of housing and not number, right?
Any, any other comments from the rest of the board?
I I was gonna say, I I agree with E Ching's conclusion there. I mean, I know I sort of initiated that that question about how it's a little bit difficult to evaluate without knowing the final unit mix, but I think you make a good point. I mean, I think Brian made it clear that we need twos, we need ones. And so as long as the proposal doesn't turn into, you know, four, 4,000 square foot footplate condos, which probably we do not need from a diversity standpoint, you know, it probably is in many ways satisfying the diversity question.
Okay, I could just add something to that, and and that is that, and I can understand what the concern would be, you know, a building that's full of nothing but three and four bedroom apartments or a building that's full of one bedroom studios, which is an issue in the city, right? Probably less so in in Winchester. I think that the the sweet spot generally for a project of this type would be two bedroom units. And I I would, I would guess that 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 there would be an emphasis on two bedroom units with one bedroom units available and three bedroom units available. But that the that the that the that, and that's how that diversity would be achieved, right? That that's, that it's, it's not a quote unquote luxury large unit building, and it's not a dorm. That it's, it's, it's somewhere in, it's navigating that in between path, which is we do a lot of condominium buildings, that's a pretty typical model these days because people want all, you know, people want different things. So, you know, families want different things than, you know, empty nesters who may just be here for four or five months a year. So I think that would be the goal. I don't think there's any desire to sort of like bait and switch that. I think it's, it would be a mix of ones, twos, and threes.
And I also echo the chair from earlier and John Schubert in the past, that diversity, the very fact that we have this kind of housing in downtown, I think was part of the 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 intent of the CBD. And so I think to member Springs' question, the the sheer fact that we can have seniors downsizing and be able to stay in town with a PA to tear. However, that works, they don't have a lot of opportunity. We were laughing about the tournaments over Joes at the moment. You know, that there aren't many alternatives to stay downtown in a, in a, you know, condo unit. So we we do want to emphasize that that too is part of the diversity.
Sally.
Thank you, Dea. Um, so the the direction of the conversation is to not have studios, which I hear is very difficult to achieve with the particular shape of the building. And, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that as long as the the members of our community who have defined need are fine with that, too. So that's, you know, the council on aging, the master plan, the housing production plan. Because, I mean, to me, a studio is something, as Mr. Hacine said, that is something that a single person, student or unmarried young professional, I guess, would find to be an attractive housing option. And I know in our master plan, there was some discussion, I don't, I can't quote it, I don't remember it precisely, about wanting to have more young people in town. But we don't have them now, so they're not part of the actual need. And I do believe the actual need is for what you're discussing now, the shift to one and two bedrooms. I don't know about three bedrooms. But I, but I definitely wanted to address the needs of the community. And so in that regard, getting rid of studios is, if that's what it works, makes, if that's what we should do to make it work, as long as that is acceptable to the partnership board, the council on aging, and a review of the master plan language, then I would say that that's a direction to go. Based on.
Yeah, sorry, we didn't mean to indicate that we were getting rid of all the studios. It was just the partnership suggestion that we minimum, we had too many, which we agreed with. So we aren't getting rid of rid of all of them.
Right.
And I would also say that some of the units that we classify, that we're currently classifying as one could end up becoming a one plus in the sense that there is a study slash nursery slash whatever space that is within the unit. And so that even a young couple might be able to move into one bedroom, actually have a small child and live there for a while until they, you know, up upscale into maybe a house in the in the in the town or something. But that would be, you know, with the revolution and work from home and so forth. You know, the nature of units is changing a little bit, and we see an opportunity there to make sure that these units have that flexibility. And what's so great about that is for some people, that's an office, for other people, it's a nursery, for other people, it's some, it's a, it's a, it's something else. So, you know.
So the the only other question I have is something that E Ching raised.
Hold on one sec, Sally. E Ching has her hand up, so she might raise that thing. And I would like to wrap this up because we we now have only 12 minutes left. So, E Ching, if you want to.
Yeah, I just wanted to note the time and why I attacked the two things that you were talking about, Dea, whether or not they fulfill the 3.0 FAR, and also what we can have the design consultant, Mr. Chen, help us with. And I would just say that, you know, this PUD has been determined by town meeting. And it, you know, I I'm trusting that town meeting understood what 3.0 would look like. And, you know, we've gotten responses from the design committee, historic committee, and housing partnership. And all in favor of this form. And so I think that this project, I mean, they've worked really hard on it. I think they're prioritizing housing, which is what the PUD is asking for and green space, what the planning board has asked for. And sensitive sods and street, you know, street feel of of this building. And I think that's what Mr. Chen can and can help us with. You know, so, yeah, I think that, you know, with construction costs rising and, you know, just that, it would be, it would be, I think cruel of us to to impede any of this in development and just to encourage us to move forward.
Okay, thank you. The, I I wanna, I think I feel that there is a consensus on the board that the diversity of housing is being met. Obviously, it's conditional on us working together to make sure that whatever changes have to be made due to practicalities about the livability of the units or whatever that we are going to be working together collaboratively to make sure that that diversity continues to be at the forefront. Cheryl, I note that you are the only member who hasn't said anything. And if you want to say something now, that would be great. Otherwise, we can move on to the next part.
No, I think we've covered diversity of housing.
Okay.
Very thoroughly.
Okay, so I think we are good on diversity of housing. I think the board therefore feels that the FIR is appropriate for what you, what you are providing. So now in our last 10 minutes, we have to do two things. Actually, we have to talk about what we would like Mr. Chen to help us with, and we also have to schedule our next meeting because we have to continue the hearing. So my suggestion at this point would be to take up someone else's suggestion would be that this discussion about the the distribution of units, the types of units would be a fruitful way to begin. So having Mr. Chen and our town planner meet with David or whoever on your team to talk about what the mix of units might be in order to ensure that they're all really high quality livable units. Is, that would be my suggestion to the board. I open up the floor. Oh, I did, we were supposed to hear something from Brian about what a, what a design consultant actually does for us. Brian, did you want to give us 30 seconds of your of your wisdom?
Sure, I think I'm just gonna highlight kind of the scope of work that we have here for Philip Chen, ABA. So really, it's working with the planning board and myself at your direction to implement the downtown plan located in 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 the regulations, as well as the design guidelines that are in the zoning bylaw. And to really kind of highlight potential concerns of where there's either friction with the design guidelines or some notes that are not necessarily being hit of those design guidelines. Typically, or pre, I shouldn't say typically, previously, there's been much, you know, a lot of attention given to the treatment at the street level and then treatment of the top floor. So, you know, that's typically, that that is probably where we would, we would probably start with, what's happening on the street level? How is that circulating? How how is that working? There definitely needs to be direction from the board related to this commercial aspect. That's obviously a kind of a almost a first level. And then we've gone back and forth now. So I I shouldn't say this board has gone back and forth, I said. But it ha, it has gone back and forth over the past 20 months. So I think those are the three things that I think I would focus on specifically, but the, I will, I'll, I will also say that the the role of the of the design, the peer reviewed design consultant is not to bring consensus amongst the board, not to bring consensus amongst the neighborhood. Is there to implement the guidelines, say where they're, they're not meeting the guidelines, and most importantly, what the development team could do if they, if anything, to meet those guidelines. In terms of very specific pinpointed things for us to talk about, I think, again, I'll just repeat, I think it's what's happening on the ground, the ground floor with the street. What's happening at the, and what's happening at the top level in terms of any, any type of potential softening? And then the third would be, like you said, Dea, this, that that will kind of inform the housing mix. That, that's kind of what I envision. I don't know if if that's a kind of the right call, that that's the direction that we will try to go in, but really trying to look for any in the next five to 10 minutes, anything that the board would would want to add to that, that could help Philip and I do the charge that the board is trying to accomplish.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is that I would love for 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 that work to begin as soon as possible. And I don't know how much time we have this evening to go into where the commercial space should be or how large it should be. I just don't know that we have the time to do that tonight. So I I just trying to think of what we could practically do. Cheryl, your hand is up.
Yeah, I think I would like to raise a few questions or studies that I'd like to see the design team and Philip explore and discuss. And that would be, there was a lot of time spent on the evolution of the building tonight, and I would like to understand better the change in the square footage of retail over the evolution of the design and get at what exactly is the what amounts we might be seeing if we are to change the residential units on the first level. And I want to, of course, say that, as I have in the past, that I think a building of this size is a challenge for our town and for the village context. And so what you've done in terms of the design having a different program as well as character. But the building maintain its wholeness is, has been really successful. So I like the townhouse effect along the bike path. But I'm not sure that we're getting a ground floor that really supports the village, supports the 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 street level, the interaction of of the public. I think we, we are trying to maintain a small town identity. And this is a large residential building at the moment. The lobby, I like the new location. But having it wrap around the corner towards the garage doesn't bring a liveliness to that street scape that is now. I I like the materials, I like what you're doing there. It's thinking to the future of the, you know, the buildings across the street that are, you know, one story. And they, you know, they are PUD, they are our future. I think we need to we need to say something at that facade and with the program on that side of the building that brings something more than a back door to whatever comes next across the street. There definitely needs to be some work on your back of house there. You know, maybe you get your electric room or your, you know, your services off the first floor. And, you know, there's a lot of things that you can move around on that first level and experiment with to bring, to bring richness to the design that you've already put forward, which is to create different types of experiences around a rather large building, right? Big footprint, but, you know, a variety of experiences. We're talking about, you know, the diversity of of apartments. I'd like to see there be a real exploration of diversity of public space and public program on the first floor that is rich. Right now, I don't, I don't think it's accomplishing that. I think it's serving the, it's mostly serving housing and it could do so much more.
That's super helpful. Thank you very much, Cheryl. I I think that's a really great challenge to put forth. I love the idea of thinking about Converse Place in the long term. And how it's going to be, you know, on day one and 10, 15 years, 100, 50 years from now, you know, however that lays out, that's a really great challenge, I think. We can definitely explore that.
Sally, your hand is up. And your mic is off.
I'm sorry. In the zoning code, and I don't know exactly where it is, there is at least one, maybe a couple of references to the first floor retail spaces. Because we have this history in Winchester of sometimes retail spaces take a while to be filled. And so that when the building is built, they're built in such a way that they could at first be for other than retail, but when the demand for retail increases, that they're already preconfigured for that benefit. And I thought that was a really great inclusion into our zoning code. Because somewhere else in our zoning code, and it might have been in the description of the PUD itself, I honestly don't know, there was a mention about 20,000 square feet of retail. And I know the building that we're looking at has like 2,500, something like that, which is, you know, a a fraction of what was envisioned. And I also know there's such a thing as a retail gap analysis, and I know that it's not an entirely universally accepted practice. But I haven't looked into it any further than that. But I think it would be great for us to have maximum retail on this site. For maximum, you know, liveliness, vitality, commercial benefit to the town. Understanding that the transition to that might require first floor residential at first. If such, because there's a demand for it. And then I also wanted to second the thought of looking at Converse Place. down the road when the rest of the P U D is developed to say that it is more than just a street to get to the garage entrance. I'm not sure what else is on there. I know there's a, there's a trash area. But to, to really find a way, and this requires working with the other owners of the P U D. But to take a long view of what that could be, because I know somewhere in our zoning code, it says connectivity to our water and Converse is a wonderful opportunity for that. So just taking the long view on what could happen there. I know I'm being vague about that because I don't know where the heck you would put the things that you've put there. But mostly I, I'm very excited about enlivening the first floor as much as we can. I think I was a proponent of first floor residential with the town planning concept that it enlivens and makes street levels safer. And I'm a proponent of a vigorous first floor commercial. You know, installation or realization. So I just leave those challenges with you. I hope that wasn't too vague.
Okay. Any other comments? I hope that's enough to start working on things. Philip, would you like to say something? Have we given you something concise enough and precise enough or?
Well, you, you know, um, thank you all, everybody. Uh, what, what I would just say about my role, you know, primarily is to assist. As, as Brian said, to assist this board and him in applying the application of the design guidelines and understanding that there is a lot of, there is, it is discretionary, parts of it are discretionary, as Mr. Krieger said early on in the meeting. You know, you know, it, it is, I think, my role to help to bring some clarity to that and, and, and if, if asked, if asked an opinion on those things. I do appreciate that Brian stated that it's not my role or job responsibility, I should say, to, to bring consensus to everything. But what I'd say from what I've heard tonight is an encouraging thing is that, you know, I like to speak about intentions for a project. And it does appear to me that everyone's intentions are going in the same direction. You know, hearing the words about the diversity of housing, just, the, the, just having housing, the addition of housing, whether it's to a population which is changing dynamic or a population that's not even there yet. But just to meet that need and hearing over and over the, the idea of enlivening the doc, the downtown, the central business district, the, and at the street level activating, you know, this amazing site. It really is an amazing site. It's an incredible opportunity. So I, it, it occurs to me that although there may be differences of opinion on, on the application of the sign, some of the design guidelines, there seems to be a lot of unanimity about the intentions for the project.
I agree. Thank you. So, um, Brian, I guess we will, you and I can, can, would it be appropriate for you and I to meet with Philip and discuss next steps? And then how, how, how do you, how do you feel that we should work?
Yeah, I think that would be great.
And if the rest of the board is okay with that. That would, just so that we can move the ball forward a little. Our next, our last decision we have to make this evening, at least in this meeting, is when we will have our next hearing. So we have, um, on the 30th, we have a, we've already shipped the agenda for that. And I believe that we will be setting aside some time to discuss the stormwater management. Am I correct on that, Brian?
Yeah. So there's going to be an initial memo from V H B. That will, we can review. And I was just going to quickly look to see, because I think we had to just get the agenda.
Yesterday afternoon, yeah.
Right. Okay. So I think we were going to do the public hearing first at seven 45. And yes, that is, um, sorry, eight 30. Sorry about that. Eight 30 for the public hearing on 10 Converse, eight 30.
Okay. So, um, the, so we're going to be discussing the stormwater, as, as Brian mentioned it, at eight 30 on next Tuesday. And then as we look forward to our next, I think our next, our plan was to have another special meeting devoted entirely to this project. And I think we were looking at, um, was it the seven?
I believe that's right.
So December 7. Will, again, as Brian pointed out last time, uh, you only get a few absences before you're not able to participate in the final decision. So can everyone on the board make it December the 7? If you. Okay, Cheryl says yes. Yiching?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, then, uh, we will schedule the seventh as well, but for now, we will continue this hearing on, at eight 30 on November the 30th. And we'll talk about stormwater.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to follow your lead. The stormwater issues are before, in fact, this evening, before the conservation commission.
Ah, okay.
And they're highly technical. We meet all the technical requirements. We'll have that discussion with the board. And then the, the stormwater management is actually peer reviewed by V H B.
Yep.
So the stormwater management is really a technical issue with the conservation commission. We're happy to do it with you. Our problem in the immediate future is where the heck we put the retail in this building, because that determines so many other, if I'm not mistaken, David, so many other parts of where we go with this and what Philip can help us with. So the, certainly I don't want to be dictating your agenda, but the stormwater management is a highly technical thing that we're doing with conservation, it'll be peer reviewed and so forth.
Understood. And I believe we are going to get the final V H B report sometime this week, I believe. Is that right, Brian?
Yep, that's, that is correct. It's supposed to be before, before the 30th.
So what we're trying to do is to move this forward as quickly as possible or as efficiently as possible is to put the things that we know will not take up a lot of discussion by this board and to, to slip it into some of our regular meetings so that we can devote the special meetings to the, the larger concerns. So as to, um, I don't have next week's agenda on there. Brian, did we specifically call out stormwater in our posted agenda?
Uh, I do not. No, for eight 30, no, on the, on the, on the 30th, it was not called out, just public hearing continuation.
Okay. So what we have is we have 45 minutes that was set aside next Tuesday for stormwater. Um, that's all the time we've got. Uh, it's a tight meeting. So, um, the, I will take it to the rest of the board. Do you want to do stormwater for 45 or do you want to talk about uh, commercial space for 45 minutes next Tuesday?
I, I vote for a commercial space.
Okay. Anyone else have a preference?
I agree.
Okay, Kurt says yes. One more person.
I agree.
Okay. So we will talk about commercial space next Tuesday at eight 30. We've got 45 minutes. And unfortunately it's really tight because we have to talk budget after that. So, um, so thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Glossby. Uh, I am happy that we're able to accommodate that.
Before I sign off, I know you guys are, are going to wrap things up, but I just feel like compelled to say that I, I'm, I'm really grateful for tonight's meeting. I'm really looking forward to working with everyone on the board to get to, to where we need to go. And, um, uh, and, and thank you for the, the good commentary tonight. And I hope everyone has a lovely holiday. And I'm going to sign off. So take care.
Thank you. And we will follow suit very quickly.
I thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, David. So if that's, I think that, um, that's it. We're done for this evening. We have a, we, we've continued our hearing till next Tuesday, day 30. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Cheryl Wolf.
Hi.
Yiching.
Hi.
Sally Dell.
Hi.
Kurt Spring.
Hi.
And I say aye as well. Uh, thank you to everyone who showed up tonight. I appreciate Philip Chen for showing up. I hope you're back in the U S and not in Greece anymore. Thank you to Nancy Polkari, our recording secretary. Thank you to Brian Mantor, our assistant town engineer, who is here just for the fun of it. John Serbeer, housing partnership board, everyone out in TV land and Windcam. We will see you all again next week. Have a great holiday, folks. Bye.
Happy holidays.
Thanksgiving.
Thanks to our town planner as well.
Thanks, Brian.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Congrats, Brian.
Thank you. I'll take that.